Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Township of Tom's River zoning board of adjustment meeting on April 27, 2017. At this time, I'd like to have everybody stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to first start out by asking everyone who hasn't done so already, could you use your cell phones? So we try to have as few interruptions to the continuity of the presentations. Thank you. This is a regular meeting of the Township of Tom's River Board of Adjustment pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Hobe is hereby notified that adequate notice as defined by the act was provided and a notice of the meeting schedule was published in the Asbury Press on January 2, 2017, and published in the Star Ledger on December 31, 2016, and that a copy of said notice was filed with the clerk of the Township of Tom's River and posted by him. We will now have a roll call of members.
Mr. Crispin.
Here.
Mr. Mike.
Here.
Mr. Cackus.
Here.
Mr. Tool.
Here.
Dr. Kemker.
Here.
Mrs. Fannick.
Here.
Mr. Alston.
Here.
Mr. Luthman.
Here.
Mr. Tuttell.
Present.
Mr. Chantos not present.
Mr. Yezzi.
Here.
Thank you. And additionally, our president tonight, our board attorney, Mr. Nasty, our board engineer, Mr. Doug Kleen, township planner, Dave Roberts is here, okay? And assistant secretary of the board, Melissa Benedetto. Our court transcriber is Miss Stacy Cole. Each application is reviewed in accordance with MLUL procedures. The board is a quasi judicial body, and its procedures are similar to those used in a courtroom. The meetings are recorded using a computer audio system. The chairperson conducts the meeting as a judge might, and the board is comparable to a jury that votes to make a final decision. All members of the zoning board of adjustment are resident volunteers and serve in the public interest without any compensation. For those of you who are here for the first time, let me briefly outline the procedure for which the board of adjustment has adopted. The applicant and his or her attorney will present their case. Step two is the applicant may call a witness on his or her behalf. Step three, there will be questions by the board members and then questions to the witness by objectors relating only to that witness's testimony. This procedure will be repeated each and every time there's a witness. When asking a question regarding a specific witness testimony, the public may only ask a question that may only ask a question only about that particular expert's testimony. Number four, upon completion of the presentation by the applicant or his or her attorney, all parties who are interested may present their views. The public may comment on any aspect of the application at the public comment period at the close of the application. When speaking, please give your name, your address, and your interest in this application to the board secretary and the court reporter who are seated to my right, and speak clearly and slowly into the microphone. To avoid delay, do not repeat what a previous objector has already objected to other than to acknowledge agreement with that objector. No person in the audience shall engage in disorderly conduct such as hand clapping, stamping of feet, whistling, using profane language, or other similar demonstrations which may disturb the order of the meeting. The chairperson has the right to close the public portion of a hearing if he or she feels the audience is unruly or making comments that are not relevant to the application. The chairperson also has the right to have any member of the audience removed from the hearing for unruly behavior. All appeals shall be taken to the Superior Court within 45 days of the date of publication of the decision. It is therefore very important that all objectors present tonight be heard by the board. The board will attempt to complete all appeals on the agenda, if at all possible, prior to 11:00 P.M. We will now proceed with the scheduled meeting. Okay, we have approval of a general voucher for payment, general vouchers for coal transcription, LLC.
So.
Okay, I have Mr. Crispin and Mrs. Fannick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have the approval of escrow vouchers. And A, we have a refund voucher for COZ Holding Associates, block 1036, lots 3 and 4.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna do them all together, A through...it looks like A through D. B is refund voucher for James Nichols, block 943.03, lot 15. Item C, refund voucher for Donald Beschada, block 1103, lot 7. And item D, refund voucher for Daniel Nemsek, block 39426.26, lot number 14. Entertained motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Crispin, Mrs. Fannick, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are ready now to move to our first application. We have appeal number 13473, a bulk variance, public hearing open, no testimony heard. Kristof Mrokowski, 3295 Churchill Drive, block 1108.09, lot 17. And this applicant is proposing the construction of a 23-foot by 30-foot in-ground pool. The pool, rear yard setback, 10 feet is required permitted, 5 feet is proposed. Side yard setback, 8 feet is required permitted, 5 feet is proposed. Distance from dwelling, 8 feet required permitted, 5 feet proposed. And the distance of pool mechanical equipment, the pad, 10 feet is required permitted and 5 feet is existing. Okay, Mr. Mrokowski? Are you representing yourself?
Yes.
Step up to the mic and please be sworn in and give your name, address.
Please raise your right hands. Do you sound like a square firm? Do you sound like a square firm in testimony about to give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and give your address for the record.
Kristof Mrokowski, M-R-O-C-Z-K-O-W-S-K-I, 3295 Churchill Drive, 08753.
Please get to the microphone, please.
All right, sir, Mr. Crispin.
Oh, yeah, I'm proposing, I'm sorry. I'm proposing to want to put in an in-ground pool in the backyard. The yard's not that big. There's a deck around, so it's an L shape. So it seems like a big pool, but it's really not. And would like to be 5 feet away from the fence. Instead of proposing, instead of...
So this is an L-shaped pool?
Yes.
And you've contoured it to the back corner of your property?
Yes, sir. That would be like the only way, the only spot available. Got a well on the other side.
And the lots number 33 and 32 that are on the south, are those...are there homes on those lots?
Yes, there's homes around.
Is there an existing fence there now?
Yes.
What type is it?
It's vinyl.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The back fence goes across two property lines.
All right, based on the survey you've given us, Mr. Luthman is correct that your fence line is not compliant. Are you aware of that?
No.
If you look in the lower left corner where the pool is...
Uh-huh.
You...your survey shows your property line being on the wrong side of the fence.
Well, actually, that's my neighbor's fence.
But it's your neighbor's fence?
Yeah, mine is on the left and on the right.
So you own the fence on the left and the right of the property, the fence that's on the bottom southern, what I would guess?
Yes, that belongs to one and the other neighbor.
Well, it appears he's on your property now.
A little bit.
Okay, I'll clear that up. Any other board members?
I have a question before you start. If you eliminated that sidewalk on the right side of the pool coming off the raised patio and continued that raised patio onto the pool, could you not move that pool over the 3 feet that's required, or actually 2 points, some feet that you had?
Which side look, I'm sorry?
Where your existing raised patio is on the back of your house.
Okay.
If you moved your pool over towards that existing raised patio and eliminated that sidewalk that is there?
Well, it's actually like a border. It's...the whole thing's concrete and there's a border going across. That's all it is.
But you're showing it as a patio with steps coming down, the way that that's drawn.
Well, you're talking about a wooden deck, right? So I would have to cut the deck.
It says raised patio, doesn't say anything about the deck.
Well, yeah, it's pretty, yeah. It's actually a 2-feet raised deck.
The deck is there, it's existing?
Yes. I mean, you know, it's...we have, you know, table over there just in case another storm comes in, so.
It's all concrete?
Yes.
It's all concrete?
Yes, well, yes.
How high is the...
I'm sorry?
How high is the patio?
It's about 2...3 feet off the ground.
All right, going back to what Mr. Tuttell said is, you could eliminate one of the variances by moving the pool, would be to the right if you're looking at this diagram. And is...how...are the footings for that deck located right at the edge of the deck?
I believe so.
You would still be able to utilize that existing patio as part of that walkway and eliminate that variance from the sideline and have the property have it meet the proper code by moving that pool to the right and still fit in the backyard where he has it because the problem he has with the corner is that the fence is not following the property line. Move the fence on the property line on that far right corner, he wouldn't have a problem with the pool location either.
So that's not his fence?
Oh, no, yeah, I see what you're saying. If he does that, his neighbor's gonna have to take down the fence, which is encroaching on his property.
Well, that's...that's the...that's the problem, why did he set that pool because he wants to eliminate it from the fence, okay, what they have on the engineering?
Just for clarification, the setback's not actually from the fence. There is a 6-foot setback in the fence, but in this case, we're talking about an 8-foot setback from the property line.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to...
Right.
Trying to eliminate that by eliminating the sidewalk on the right side, using the raised patio as the sidewalk.
And that is possible, or if the...if that was a raised deck, it could be 6 inches to the point where he'd derail it, and then there would be 8-foot setback from that too, but in this case, it's only a 2-foot.
2-foot setback, right. Correct. That's what I'm trying to talk in now by eliminating that variance by sliding that pool to the right. Now, he would be able to accommodate the pool location and eliminate that need for that side door setback and the variance.
Quick, real quick, on the fence issue. Next to positive is part of the building, part of the pool permitting process, that they'll ask whose fence that is, and if he says it's their neighbor's, they can't...he could take that down and your security would be breached. So they would probably require that you put up a fence of your own. So that fence is gonna get relocated to the property line no matter what.
Yeah, but also it states that he can't use the neighboring fence as a security. So he's going to have to relocate that fence onto his property line.
Yeah, I agree.
And once that fence is relocated, Mr. Kleen, would you agree, looking at the plans, that that would bring the lower right portion of the fence line that currently exists, his neighbor's fence line, once that becomes compliant with the property line shown on the survey, then his own fence would allow him room to move it to the right?
It would be easier to slide that way. I still think he's probably gonna have to do some deck work or some work on the raised patio to clear that out. It looks like he's only looking for 3 feet that he would really need. Yeah. I mean, I would like to maintain, you know, a walkway around the pool as well. So if I move this...
You're gonna still maintain the walkway?
Still gonna maintain the walkway.
You're just...you're just gonna take out that little notch out that you see in the raised patio that we see. You'd probably lose that little notch out, which is, if that's your steps, you're gonna have to make the steps internal to the deck.
Well, the deck is really small anyway. If I put the steps, then there's no reason for a deck.
The other...
I mean, the deck, you know, sticks out maybe like, I don't know, 6, 7 feet of the...of the house.
Or you could elevate the deck to that side of the pool and continue and move the pool over and make follow the contour on the deck to that side as long as you don't exceed the 2-foot height, just for that corner. That's, you know, that would help you out immensely for a revenue.
Do you have kids?
I'm sorry?
Do you have children?
Yes.
How old?
Six.
And the deck is raised 2 feet above the pool, is it?
Yes.
Okay, and if you move it over, it becomes a jumping point for the kids? I don't think that's too safe. I don't think I would wanna do that.
So you're more comfortable where it is now?
Absolutely, yes. When the children come out like that, it's a safety factor.
Keeping with that, you're only 5 foot from the house, correct?
Um, yes, on that one portion, yes.
Could you explain what's on that portion of the house for safety reasons? It's a safety requirement because from 5 feet, you know, if you get, being super a teenager, they could jump off of something into the pool. That's why the fence is there.
Well, maybe.
What's right there on the house? Is there...
Are there any windows?
There...well, there is a window, yes.
What is...what is the room in that corner?
It's a living room.
Living room?
Yes.
With a roof line above it? What's it, 2 stories?
It's actually, the second story sticks out about 2 feet of the first. This is like the overhang.
Can't move. Okay. And is there a window there?
There is another window on the top, yes.
All right, any other board member question on this, comment? Okay, does any member of the audience have a question for this witness? Come on up, sir. Please state your name and address, at least one.
Please raise your right hands. Do you sound like a square firm in testimony about to give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and give your adjustment record.
Christian DeLuca, D-E-L-U-C-A, 3316 Long Point Drive in Tom's River.
Okay, Mr. DeLuca?
I'm the neighbor directly behind him. The question I have is, as you know, my yard floods with heavy rains, or you may not even know that. If you put the pool in, I'm concerned that more water's gonna spill into my yard because when they put the pool, they're gonna have to put some kind of a walkway around it and pitch that walkway away from the pool, and that could get more water coming into my yard.
It's pitched already.
It's pitched already?
I have...it's all concrete in the back.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna do after, I'm gonna take that water away and it goes in the pool, the way I'm concerned.
So you're gonna tip water, rainwater, into your pool?
Oh, I'm gonna try to go away, but if you're saying if your backyard floods and it goes into mine, it will go into a pool, right?
No, I'm worried about your water from your yard continuing into my yard and giving more...a worse flooding problem.
It's all concrete right now as it is, so...and I'm pretty sure it's pitched away from the house.
Right, it's pitched away from your house into my yard, and if you put the pool in, aren't they gonna pitch more...pitch the decking around the pool or the concrete or the pavers around the pool away from the pool and more towards me then? I mean, I get...we get 2 inches of rain and I get 6 inches of water in the backyard, and that ponds out about 10 feet.
Okay, understood. Mr. Kleen?
This is send or inter, your realm of expertise here on rain runoff?
Drainage drainage, yes, that's my sweet spot. Grading plan is required as part of the final sign-off, and I am looking at some arrows that I'm taking as our flow arrows are intended to be, and they do show that the concrete or the design grade is directed to the adjacent, adjacent property. When we put in the pool, we can do grade, adjust the gradients, so it pitches towards the applicant's house. We can put in some type of some surface drainage system, although I imagine there might be a high water table out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. Just probably addressing the issue through design grade would probably be the best way. More or less set a high point on a common line between your properties, so whatever's on yours stays on yours, whatever's on yours stays on yours, and that can be done with design grade.
The other question I have is now, what about the fence? Who's responsible for moving that fence and paying for it?
Well, technically, your fence is on his property, so he has every right to ask you to remove it.
Okay.
Am I correct with that, Mr. Nasty?
Oh, that is correct. It's encroaching on the applicant's property, it may be the allegation of the neighbor of the fence.
So that's kind of a moot point. That just happened. I know you didn't hear it intentionally, but it happens a lot. But once it's discovered, if the neighbors can't come to an agreement and the neighbor that's encroached upon wants the fence moved, then it has to be moved.
Okay, 'cause that was there when we bought the house.
I understand. We're not blaming you for it, but it came up.
Okay.
What we're...what we're looking at right now is, because this drainage problem is one of concern, we're probably, the board accurs, going to ask you to come back with another set of plans that clearly delineates the drainage and avoids your neighbor from being involved with the drainage from the runoff of that pool construction.
I would talk with Mr. Miller, yeah, this engineer that will care of this, for this guidance as far as, you know, how to address the issue.
Can I add a question?
Sure.
Impervious coverage, too. I understand the property, the property of Mr. Tom's River, what's the percentage of impervious coverage in the area of the property versus proposed? I am arguing with him.
Pretty much the whole backyard.
That doesn't necessarily...right, I mean, you said you just bought the house, or...
Yeah, well, two years ago.
So I guess I'd have to be addressed with your...
We understand what you're trying to do, especially with a young child, but it's gotta be done right, and it's gotta be done so that your neighbor doesn't suffer for it. And that's part of our mission here at the zoning board, is to make sure that everybody's rights are protected.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of the board. The...I don't...I'm not sure if the impervious coverage was specifically reviewed, but I can say that the fact that the pool is going in here with paved concrete patios now, we don't count the pool as impervious surface coverage, so technically, they're reducing the amount of impervious.
What that means is you have an issue you have to address to with that, with the impervious coverage. So you really need to talk to your...Mr. Miller that drew up these plans?
Okay.
And you're gonna have to come back to us.
All right, so address the water issue.
Pardon me?
With the water issue, with water runoff?
Drain.
The drainage?
Runoff and drain, exactly.
And if the engineer has any questions, you can certainly call.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point, just a point of information. We did have a visit by another neighbor this turn of the day today, who also mentioned a problem with drainage. So apparently, this is a condition that is shared by several property.
Mr. DeLuca, are you tax lot 32? Do you know that that's your property?
I'm directly behind him.
Okay, there are 2...is most of your lot behind you?
Yes.
There's 2 lots?
Yes.
Tax lot 33, that's a small portion on his south side, and then the majority of tax lot 32 is his complete backyard.
That's my backyard, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and this is...with pools, this is a common concern. Drainage is a big issue. It's not...it's not new, and it's not something that this board doesn't hear often. So usually, you can come up with a plan, but you're gonna have to come back before us. We're gonna have to review the drainage plan, and then your neighbors will also have another opportunity to speak up and question that drainage plan as well. Okay? Board members, anything else?
Just a couple extra, elevation for the backyard.
We need...yes, okay. Dr. Kemker is asking if when you come back, you'll also bring some photos with you, just so we can get an idea of the elevation of the deck, the pool, and proximity.
We can do a site inspection at that point. I mean, rather, I mean, instead of some photos and all of that, and then you can have a very clear idea of what we're doing, but...
We can do that, too. We'll call for a site inspection, and we'll have a site inspection at your property. Will you have your permission to come on your property?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mrokowski, I think that's gonna be it for tonight. I'm just gonna have to have you come back with revised drainage plan.
Okay? Yep.
We gotta...what about the...the...
You wanna...
The...
You have any idea how long it'll take you to get that done?
I'll call Mr. Miller tomorrow, and I mean, I'm assuming, I don't know, a week, maybe?
May 11? That's our next meeting, May 11?
Yes, I guess.
You're sure you'll be ready by May 11?
Oh, could I call you tomorrow, maybe?
Yeah, but we have to make an announcement that you...
Do you want to wait till the end of the month? We have another...
No, let's do May 11. I mean, it's getting late anyway.
There's a notification.
No. We...yeah. Your notification, he wins his time limit, and we say that the next meeting is on May 11.
All right, so just to repeat, there's gonna be no notifications. You're gonna waive your time limits on this, and you'll be here on May 11 with revised drainage plan.
Okay? Mr. Chairman, in the event that that does not happen, sorry, in the event that that does not happen, I'm prepared, you should re-notice for whatever the next meeting is, the plans are done, so just...I just wanna explain that to the applicant, and if he doesn't make that date...
Then he has to re-notice.
You should re-notice, and we should make sure that...
You understand what that means?
Yes.
Okay.
Means the pressure's on.
It is.
Okay, sir. Your heart's in the right place, Miss. We just need to do it right, okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for our second appeal of the night. This is gonna be appeal number 13360, use D3 variance, preliminary and final major site plan, public hearing open, no testimony heard. This is the Ballah Educational Academy, Muslim Society of New Jersey, 1733 Lakewood Road, block 172.04, lot 12. The applicant is being represented by Robert Santangelo. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing 3903 square foot mosque in order to construct a 51,040 square foot private school, along with associated improvements, including a parking lot and detention basin. The development as proposed requires a D3 conditional use variance. Okay, Mr. Santangelo?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening.
What do you think, sir?
Robert Santangelo, on behalf of the applicant of Ballah Educational Society, Muslim Society of New Jersey. Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to discuss this matter earlier this afternoon with the board's attorney, Mr. McGuckin, Gregory McGuckin, as well as with Mr. Liston this evening. Although it's a little bit out of the ordinary, I would respectfully request the board to consider taking a break right now, as there is a jurisdictional issue we need to discuss as well as a notice issue, and we need to have some discussions with the board's professional staff, if that's possible.
How much time do you...
I don't know when Mr. McGuckin's gonna be here. Perhaps we can resolve it without him.
Why don't we tend to at least say we're gonna recess till 8:15?
That's fine.
And we'll come back.
Thank you.
So we'll recess till 8:15.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just put my appearance on the record?
Yes, Mr. Please.
Edward Liston, Tom's River, New Jersey, on behalf of the following objectors. Charles and Rosemary Woodsett, 532 Woodview Road. Michael and Allison Polak, 529 Woodview Road. Jim Stefanic, 527 Woodview... Jim Stephanic, 527 Woodview Road. Diane and Jim Valeri, 1722 Catherine Court. And Sunil Dear, 531 Woodview Road. Those are the objectives that I represent.
Thank you, Mr. Liston.
Before, Mr. Liston, I have one question about the Janice Stephanic. Can you spell that last name, please?
S.T.E.P.H.A.N.I.C.K. Not my, not my viewers. I think I mispronounced it. I pronounced it like yours.
No, it's correct.
Okay.
I think he's a cantankerous cop, but I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
There was one of those.
Okay, we are, everybody's good? We recess for 15 minutes, so we'll return at 8:15. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your patience. The attorneys are still talking. Mr. McGuckin, they joined the conversation. So we're just waiting for the results of that discussion. We give them a few more minutes and then we'll check on it and see how much time we need. I thank you for your patience.